All right, thank you guys for coming out. We're gonna get kicked off here in just a moment. I guess I'll share these real quick. Get you some more views. Some little larky news. Yeah, I've got the other one. Couple weeks perhaps. Some new information. I think there's room for error. All right, thank you all for coming out here tonight. Especially thank you our candidates who came out to make themselves available. I know this job doesn't pay a lot of money, not very much at all. So each of these individuals are taking their personal time, setting aside, setting aside hobbies, things that they love and care about to try and serve the city of Pickens. So I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart as a, just outside the city resident for willingness to serve. And thank you to each and every one of you for coming out tonight. My name is Clay Counts. I'm the chairman of the Pickens County Republican Club. Certainly not a me show. I have a great group around us that help make these events possible. Our goal is to educate voters. So we host events like this all the time. There's a sign up sheet in the back that I would welcome you to sign up on. Promise not to bombard your email, but anytime we're having events like this for state, local races, county races, we'd love to have you come be part of that. To get us started, I'll go over some housekeeping points. Restrooms will be to my left, your right, back down that way, and then take a left if you need to use the restroom. We also have some cupcakes in the back because our sweet Bonnie, one of our members, it is her birthday, so make sure to tell her happy birthday today. I think she's 29, is what I've been told. Again, 29 again, can't do more than twice. So again, thank you all for coming out here tonight. I'm gonna open us up with a word of prayer. Dear heavenly father, God, thank you for allowing us to come here today and to live in a nation where we can freely gather as citizens, share ideas, ask questions, learn about our candidates, and become an educated voter to vote for who represents us the best. God be with us tonight. Allow us to operate in a way that honors you and allow us to bring glory to your name. It's 57 pray. Amen. And if you would, if you would join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is theirs, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So we are the Pickens County Republican Club. So we are a Republican club. This is obviously a nonpartisan race, so none of these candidates are represented by a party. They're all individuals with their own ideas and beliefs. Some may be more Republican than others. That's fine. We're here to educate you all. But as part of being a Republican club, we always read the Republican creed. So I'm gonna hand it off to Bonnie now to read our Republican creed.
Thanks, Clay. I do not choose to be a common man. It is my right to be uncommon. If I can seek opportunity, not security, I want to take the calculated risk to dream and build, to fail and to succeed. I refuse to barter incentive for dull. I prefer the challenges of life to guaranteed security, the thrill of fulfillment to the stale calm of utopia. I will not trade freedom for beneficence, nor my dignity for a handout. I will never cower before any master, save my God. It is my heritage to stand erect, proud, and unafraid, to think and act for myself, enjoy the benefit of my creations, to face the whole world boldly and say, "I am a free American."
Thank you. So it's time to, time to get started. Go over the rules tonight. It's very simple. Each of the candidates are gonna be given equal time to speak. We're gonna start off with a two-minute opening statement, followed by questions from the crowd. That's where you guys come in. We have a runner in the crowd who's gonna, if you raise your hand, he'll come to you, let you ask your question. A couple of points on questions. They have to be directed at all the candidates, so you can't single one out and say, "Hey, this guy," you know, whatever it may be. It has to be asked in a way that they all can answer. And remember they're questions. I know it's easy to get caught up and go through a story maybe sometimes, but try to keep those brief so we can hear from these gentleman and lady what they actually believe and what they want to represent you with on Pickens City Council. So having said that, we're gonna start to my right, Mr. Ed Lees with the first one. We'll run down their open statements and then we'll go round robin all the way back around so everybody gets a chance to answer questions first. So without further ado, I'll pass it off to Ed.
Yeah, what a way to start off, huh? Alright, my name is Ed Lees. I live at 144 Cal Lily Court, right here in Pickens, obviously. I'm a homeschool dad. And I sit on a couple of different boards. I sit on the Upper State Council Navy League of the United States Board as their youth program coordinator. I do a podcast here in town to try to get the word out about everybody, you know, who's running or anybody who has a business or whatever. So besides that, I volunteer with the United States Navy Official Youth Program. I'm an officer in there. My last real job, I guess you could say, was in labor at Oconee Nuclear Station inside a protected area. So I've really been in construction most of my life. And I'm married almost 19 years, got four boys, one of them's running around here somewhere, and then four grandkids out in Powder Swamp, believe it or not. So.
Thank you. My name is John McManus. Lived in the area here for over 20 years. I'm not originally from Pickens. I appreciate the hospitality and the warmth that everyone in this town has given to me. In fact, most people treat me as if I've lived here my entire life. And then after they talk to me for a while, they wish I hadn't, you know, kind of thing. But my background is that I am a business owner. I've been in real estate management, commercial management for over 30 years. I've also been involved in some boards years ago when I lived in the city of Creher. I was involved in the planning commission there. You know, I was asked to be on that board because I was standing up at the time to some development that was going on in our neighborhood that I and my neighbors didn't appreciate. And so from that, I actually was asked to be a part of city government in that way. So yes, I've been here in the, in the, in the Pickens area. My children have attended the Pickens schools. Both my daughter and my son graduated from Pickens High School. And I've been here for well over, what, 20 years, over 20 years in the area. And so I live on Florence Street. If you're down that way, you can stop in and just help out. Got a lot of work going on there, so feel free to, feel free to do that. Thank you.
How's everybody doing? My name is Joel Rice. Been in Pickens 30, 29 years out of my 32 years living. The only reason why I wasn't there is because I moved to Atlanta for a little bit, moved to Florence for a little bit, lived in Charleston as an entrepreneur for a while. Graduated from Pickens High School here in 2010. I do some work with the rec center up here. Volunteer coach for football, baseball, basketball up here. So if anybody has kids that, oh, go go through the rec center, I've probably seen them or at least coached them or talked to them at some point or another because I think the kids up here are important. I like what they do up there. Currently work for Prisma Health as a radiology statuary. So if anybody goes through Prisma Health needing an ultrasound or things of that nature, I've also probably talked to. Pickens has always been my home. I've been here, so I've been here almost all my life. Family's been here all my life. I live over by Griffin Ebenezer. I've been on that, I've played on that basketball court out there. I've played on the baseball field out there. I've been here on Bruce Field. I've been everywhere. And I can always go anywhere and still come back here. That's why I'm here. I'm here for my wife. I'm here for my son. I'm trying to do something that's gonna make a bit of a difference here in Pickens. I'm not gonna try to hold anybody too long. Thank y'all for having me again. I hope I can answer your questions the rest of my day.
Hi, I'm Ray Wilson. I'm a city mail carrier here in Pickens. We, my wife and I have lived on East Cedar Rock for the last four years. Each year, we've had the annual Halloween spectacular. Last year, we had 484 children come to our house. We are trying to create a lasting memory for the children and provide something for them. And something that they can remember 10 years from now. They can come back and say, "Remember that house we used to go to." And being a city carrier, I get to see one-third of the city every single day. It gives me a unique perspective and contact with the local residents and business owners that I've communicated with the last 40 years. So I have no idea. Like I said, as I've had extensive management experience, I was the operational director when I came here in 95 with Airborne Express. I worked 20 years in Pepsi-Cola customer service and sales. So those attributes gives me a good, well-rounded opportunity to bring a new, fresh idea and stand on city government. So that's what I have. Thank you.
Well, I completely hate public speaking, but here I am. My name's Jessica Merrill and I'm running for the 36-month unexpired term. And I appreciate you guys coming out and listening to us tonight. I live in the Crescent Hill District and our precinct, I have lived there for one year because I used to live over by the rec department and my house was sold and I had to find a place to live. And there was only two places to rent in Pickens at the time, and so that's why I live there. But I do love the city of Pickens and I love Pickens County. My grandparents, their home state is over in Dacisville, so I've been around Pickens my whole life. And the reason why I am running for city council is because of the complete lack of transparency that our current city council is giving us. I believe there's many issues within our city council at this time. I have been speaking out about that. I've had my political signs stolen. I've been physically threatened. And I don't feel comfortable telling you guys where I currently work because also my volunteer job, or not my volunteer job, but my volunteer position where I do a support group, they no longer would allow me to do the support group there while I'm running. So not only did that hurt me, but it hurt the people that I was helping. So I'm running for the people that live here in the city of Pickens. We deserve truth. We deserve honesty. We deserve better.
My name is Jonathan Holder. First of all, I'd like to thank you for being here. Thank you for PCRC for putting this on and the Markham Mill for hosting us. Like I said, I'm Jonathan Holder. I'm 32 years old. I think I represent the younger, the younger folks in the room, but born and raised here. Very proud to be from Pickens and want to create a good place to live for future generations. A little bit about myself. By day, I work and manage a family construction company building custom homes. Like I said, I'm 32, but I've been doing that for eight years now. So I'm proud to say that I've accomplished and completed $25 million in direct projects that I've ever seen and completed. So I'm proud of that. Even though I am young, I do feel like I'm experienced and qualified and competent. Secondly, my purpose to running is first stability, given the nature of that. It is a special election. You know, I don't want to see a lot of turnover for the council. I think I do bring in some good qualities that, that could offer some stability to the council. And then secondly, if elected, I'll be proud to represent Pickens. One of my slogans on my signs or cards, if I get the opportunity to be here, is "Building Community." So I wanted to tie that into what I do for a living. Reinforce that I could bring those skills to an aging infrastructure and then also not only bricks and sticks, but more importantly, in my role is bringing people together and making a good, good community feel, which is important for me for the time of Pickens.
My name is Joseph Kopacz and I'm running for city council. I'm 23 years old. I'm young, but I don't think I'm too young. So my principles are love and unity, transparency, and progress. And I want to see, I think we should have a plan for growth, a plan for growth and quality of business. And I want to look to see our future generation be able to build our youth and empower our youth to be their own boss and build their own businesses as well. I'm also looking to represent the people of Pickens as an act of service. I've been here for over 12 years and my father's been here for over 40 years. He owns Tony's Restaurant. We've been serving people Italian-American food for over 40 years. And I've been working there my whole life as part of food service and serving the greater people of Pickens. And I look to serve people and representing the best of our ability. One way is through the comprehensive plan, ensuring that we have a viable plan, ensuring that your ideas are being shared and that we laid down the groundwork and foundation to getting us a step closer to fulfilling your vision of what you want to see the city of Pickens look like. Another way I will represent all of you is by shaking your hand and keeping a vocal line of communication. I know I've shook a lot of hands here. And I will continue shaking your hands even after I'm elected. And I understand there are two sides to every story. And I'm here to hear both sides. And as city councilman, I want to meet us in the middle. So through love and unity and high level of transparency, we can progress together. Thank you.
All right, thank you guys. It's time for the crowd questions. So if you have a question, raise your hand. They'll be shy.
Alright, let's go home.
Alright, that's it. I'll start us off. I'll start us off. So water. I'll go ahead and kick it down and we'll start with water because that's a, that's a big one. There's issues with the regional water authority pulling out, going with Greenville Water. You all see what's going on there. I'd like to get each of your opinion on that. Share what you think about what the current administration's doing. Do you agree with that? Disagree? Need more information? And get your take on the subject and let the voters know where you stand.
Thanks. Appreciate that. First question. The litmus test. Yeah, thanks. So yeah, obviously, water is a major concern here in the community. And forgive me if you can't hear me. A few years ago, I had some neck surgery and since then, my voice hasn't been nearly as strong as it used to be. So if you can't hear me, just put a hand up. I'll try to talk louder. Thank you. So here's the thing. The water issue is probably become more complicated than it needed to be. It definitely was not handled. I don't think it was handled as well. I agree with some others who felt like the, perhaps transparency or the, or the discussion of it wasn't maybe out enough in the public. I think at the time, the council didn't think they needed to be so transparent with it. It was a almost a very straightforward issue. If you, as I've done some research on the subject, I realized that I think council had some legitimate issues with, with what was going on with the joint regional. And, and they're making a decision to move away to Greenville right now, I think is, is the smart thing. It makes the most sense. But I think the, the issue's not over. It needs to be discussed and rehashed and make sure that every, all the facts have been discussed and analyzed properly.
No, I agree with John. This is a way to start off a conversation. But I also agree with the water situation. It has become more complicated than it should have been at the beginning. There's been a lot of communication that people felt has not happened in public like it should. There's been a lot of communication that people feel like shouldn't be happening in public. I think with certain legal discussions, there is a certain amount of discretion you have to have. Overall, I do, I do agree with doing the six-month temporary, see where we're going. At least that way, it gives us more time to plan out with whether we still want to try to come back and talk to the Detroit water system. It may not happen. Or at least work out a better deal with what we have chosen to do going forward. I don't believe that the decision was made out of malice towards anyone. At the end of the day, there are plenty of people who are now getting a better quality of water than what they were getting. We all can definitely agree that at the end of the day, the infrastructure has not been great and has not been great for a long time. And I think now this is giving us a better opportunity to focus more on that infrastructure as compared to focusing more on, okay, what are we doing with the plant? What are we doing with this construction? And putting more people on their own to go for it. That's how I kind of see it. I don't think anybody did it out of malice, but I do agree transparency would have been a little bit better for everyone at the end of the day. There should have been some more out in, out in the open overall compared to the whole discussion, but I don't think anybody did it completely out of malice.
I also agree with transparency. One of the issues that I see that bothers me is the introduction rate. Many of us have had satellite cable. You get an introduction rate, short time, then they go to double up or turbo up the way. What's the real numbers up front? Tell us what it's gonna be, you know, why are you selling us, giving us a deal that no other city's gonna get? So again, you know, a lot of these meetings that they're having, our executive session, should be out in the open for the public. With the transparency, they'll build more trust. And we have to go with whichever deal that's gonna do best for us, give us the best quality of water, give us the cheapest rate overall, long-term, not short-term. So I really don't know which way until we have real substantial numbers. And there are no changes every day. If you come forward, tell us what it is, let everybody make the correct decision and move forward.
So I have reviewed minutes and meetings, and nowhere in those minutes or meetings can I see where this city council ever made any indication to the public that they were even thinking about switching to Greenville. So that's my issue with transparency. When did they decide they were gonna switch with Greenville? Were they having secret meetings? Where, how, how did this decision come about? Because they obviously did not have the discussion in front of us. That's my first issue with that. My second issue is that they used Greenville lawyers to draw the resolution to leave joint water. That's a complete conflict of interest. Their city attorney advised them off the record to wait 30 days to get their own legal advice before breaching this contract, and they decided not to do that. They started putting out posts on Facebook. They were complete scare tactics, saying that our current water was contaminated. I went to our water facility. I met with the guys that treat our water. There's EPA standards. They cannot let the water leave the treatment facility contaminated. They gave us false numbers. They said, they kept saying, "It's gonna cost $100 million." It's not gonna cost us $100 million. The current projected rate is $93 million. We're contracted in at 28% of that. I could go on and talk all night. There's too many issues to stand here and tell you about those issues. And that's the biggest reason why I'm also running.
So I just want to reiterate that the water issue, although it was timely for the decision to run, it wasn't a motivating factor for me to run. I think it is a very hot topic, one that should be for good reason, that we are very concerned about. If I compare it to what I have seen through, through meetings, it seems like the motivating factor is price and having a, although price for the city of Pickens residents. If I compare that to what I do for a living, if I, you know, if I'm asked to get a price or a quote on a job, you know, if I have a competitor who's, you know, 10%, maybe even 5% less than me, I might not get that job. Anything more than 10%, I might not even get a phone call. So from what I understand, some of the figures, I think price was the motivating factor in the decision to, to go with Greenville Water. Now I do think it could have been handled with better transparency, which I agree with, so that there's not so much discourse around the subject. So like I said, although price is a motivating factor, I think we should make sure we're not being sold a bill of goods and entering into a long-term agreement that is not the best for the city of Pickens.
Like I said, I've shook a lot of hands and I've asked a lot of questions. And a lot of people tell me about their, what their take is on the water issue. And I've drew a rational conclusion on the idea that this issue's not as divisive as we think it is. It really isn't. I think everybody just wants to know what they're paying for. And they want clean water. And they want it at a economically feasible rate. So the solution at this point would be to reprioritize and make sure that we fix our water pipes and clean our water pipes and maintain them, maintain them through flushing routines. And then we can continue negotiating our water supply and making sure that we have the best deal and we strike the best deal possible. But for right now, it is important that we fix our water pipes and clean our water pipes because it doesn't matter if you have the freshest of freshest water. If it's going through dirty pipes, it's just not gonna come out high quality. So like I said, it's not as divisive as we think it is. I think if we just hear each other out and meet in the middle, like I said, we can make the best decision and have more public forums and make the right decision and everybody can be satisfied. Thank you.
So water's been a pretty hot topic, cold topic, however you want to put it. So there's three schools of thought. We throw millions of dollars at the old water plant, get it going and stay good for so many more years. Second thought is that we can keep our integrity as a city through the decisions that we've made and stay with Pickens Joint Regional. Then the other one, looking on the surface with Greenville, we don't know really which way that could go because we don't really have a say at that. And it's a long-term contract for a long, long time. And even since the 70s, Greenville's been saying that they would like to have us in the region. They like to supply to everybody. So again, I agree with what everybody said here. Transparency, if it wasn't, and I don't think it, like you said, I don't think it's like being hidden or being malicious, use the word malicious. I don't think it was like that. But I think it was like, we gotta get this done. So on the outside of it, outside of chambers, it raises questions with me, with them, and with you. Why are we doing this so fast? Why is this happening? And everybody's like, well, November 5th is the election. You know, if we have this small majority, we'll get it. We can push it through. We can push, we can push, we can push. I don't know if there's a time limit on it. And none of us up here can say that we have 100% of the information to give you because we're not inside of executive session. But I think it's our, our choice to dig to get that information. So when one of us is elected, that we will be able to hand deliver all the information to you that we can receive from them.
Thank you. So next question, not for me. There we go. Yeah, get a couple down front here.
Since the water was number one on the agenda here, what is your most important issue that you want to address if you're elected and how will you address it?
So my first, like my major goal is trying to have better support for parks and recreation out here, especially, especially JCPark. Because JCPark has been down and out for far too long, in my opinion. There's not enough people being able to go and enjoy the park like we used to. That's always been top, that's always been a place where I could go as a kid, where I want to take my son, where I want everybody to be able to take their kids and enjoy a day out. But because the equipment that's been down there has been underreg, has been underregulated, needs to go, needs to be replaced. And it's been taking a longer time than necessary to get that done. Fencing around all the fields need to be redone. I want some of the signs to be fixed up and refurished. I also would like to see more of a revitalization and refurbishment throughout the city itself as a whole. Because I've been seeing a lot of homes, especially in my neighborhood, that's been getting picked up, rebuilt, and resold off and look better. Especially in, most of the houses I've seen over 10, 15 years, dislured or dilapidated, falling apart, overwired, all kinds of mess. And I want to be able to get with the administrator, see where we can adjust a budget to where we can start putting more money into the parks and, putting more money into the revitalization. Because I want Pickens to, I want Pickens to look good. I want people, I want the kids to enjoy being here. I want them to have places they can go without being at home stuck on playing Fortnite all night. I want them to have places they can go without being at home stuck playing Fortnite all night. We want them to go out and do stuff. And without Parks and Rec and the Recreation Center being at their best, I don't think we're doing it. And I want that to be something for them to be able to do.
My main focus would be to revitalize downtown. Do better landscaping, signage, organisms, you know, do some paints and color, something downtown. Clean up the leaves downtown, help these store owners make their stores look better to create better foot traffic. And more foot traffic creates better tax base, which all benefits goes in a circle. A few weeks ago, I was invited to a Rotary Club meeting. And I was touched by this program that Dave presented from the county. And I've reached out to them and I've not gotten that information exactly, but it is just what it is. Is this program the county has offers a learning program for people that are challenged and try to get them to learn how to go to a job, do a job, become a productive part of society. And the county will actually pay for the labor, the management, the whole nine yards. So the city could get a lot of things down downtown, like painting the curves, painting the lines. All free of charge of labor. All they have to do is reach out to this program, sign on this program, give them the supplies and the ability to become a better person. Thank you.
So I do agree with what Joel had to say about our parks. I have two children, one's an adult, one's still a child. But we spend a lot of time out in the city of Pickens. And one of the things that kind of, as a mom, as a working person, you know, sometimes I don't want to cook, but we don't have any good restaurants. I won't say any good. We don't have a lot of good restaurant options after 5:00 PM. And we don't have them on Sundays, and we don't have them on Mondays because they all close. I don't know how they keep their doors open because of the limited hours. But I would love for some restaurants to be open during those times. Also, the park, so JCPark, the county gave the city $100,000 to fix that park. The city could only account for about $50,000 of it. They asked for more money from the county. And the county said, well, we're not going to give you another $100,000 because you can't account for all of the rest of the $100,000. So we're only going to give you 50 this time. So with $150,000, that's what we have sitting down there. Plus, I'm sure they've had more grants, I don't know. But we need to get a lot of, we need to get more activities for our teenagers and youth because it's proven that they need something to do every day to stay off substances. And I think that's very important.
So I think I touched on it in my introduction a little bit, but obviously my purpose for running was first primarily stability and the fact that it is a special election. But another important item for me, that would be important to me is maintaining, beautifying the city. There's a lot of unmaintained properties, I think, whether that be crowded properties or some commercial. So I think finding ways to fill those and create a vibrant community. And then also, I think the role of city councilperson or any person in the governance of the local city would be to support those that are in the employees department, as people that are there representing us day to day. And then, you know, supporting those people and then being able to answer those, answer to them and be accountable to not only the citizens, but also the people that are working on our behalf to make our city better every day.
All right, so my, I guess, top priority is having a plan for growth. A plan for growth in population and a plan for growth in quality of business, and I'll touch on that. So I feel that small-scale developments and even on a large scale, I wouldn't mind to see some small-scale developments such as, you know, small family or multifamily homes or having scattered site developments. But when it comes to large-scale developments, I feel that there are things that we need to look out for. We have to maintain the character of the city while growing it slowly. And the best way to do that is through zoning restrictions and ensuring that we have a proper site plan so we could address any sort of hazards beforehand. But that's, that's in the future. I think the main thing is, is just like a lot of people who said, beautify the city. As far as quality of business goes, it's through exposure and location, making sure that our businesses have traffic. And the best way to do that is through signs, making sure that they, like Tony's restaurant, we have a sign above ground and it's lighting up so people can see where we're at. So exposure and making sure that our employees are paid fairly so that we can keep our employees in establishment that's understaffed. If we have an establishment that's understaffed, it will lead to a low-quality business, so that affects the quality business a lot. Thank you.
So I forgot to mention, I got on the board of, the Board of Architecture review for the city of Pickens in 2017, and I chaired it for two years, so I can, I can agree with the signage. Bring it things back to where it's a little bit more vibrant, where people can see what's going on. Not, but not to be too lenient to where you're just throwing a piece of plywood against the wall and spray painting, you know, your business name on it, nothing crazy like that. But I think going back from business, even before, you know, paying a livable wage for employees that are here, is that there needs to be more communication with town. And it's not necessarily transparency, like when things are just going bad, but even the good things. I think city, being on city council where you can sort of be a spokesperson, not have to worry about what other, if the other counselors are doing it or not, but just getting the information out there so everybody can be on the same page. And it's official information and completely unbiased. So even before we can, you know, build the second and third and fourth and fifth floors, we need to get that foundation straight. That's something that maybe we just took for granted and sort of neglected for a little while. But that's something that we need to get back to, is just the communication from council, from administrators, all the way down to the people, we're all on the same page. And from there, we can take the next step and the one after that. Hopefully unify in the end and then we can get to the, you know, the signage things. But from the get-go, it's all about being a good neighbor with one another and communicating and talking.
Thank you. So I'm just one person on this council if I'm elected, okay, so I can't do everything. But my goal is to make sure that Pickens City government runs like the government's supposed to run. Balanced, looking at all the issues, trying to bring a lot of people together and trying to get them all under one umbrella. It's, right now, it just seems like there's a lot of, you know, running around in circles and we're trying to, you know, put out the fires and yet still try to conduct business in some fashion. But you have to bring some order to things, and my goal is to try to bring order to this thing and bring, you know. I like to dig into the details. And in my business, the devil's in the details, right? So if you, if you don't have an eye for that, you're going to, you're going to have trouble with larger entities that are, that are giving you complicated documents that are hard to understand. And you have to depend on, you know, four or five different attorneys to try to bring it all together. Another issue for sure, one of my objectives is to, is help manage our growth that is coming. We're going to have growth. 183 is going to be expanded, it's going to become a major highway. And while that four lanes is not coming all the way to the town, as I understand it, it's going to be close enough to where there's going to be a lot of pressure for new home divisions, subdivisions, and developments that are going to, that are going to impact Pickens. Just because a community or a neighborhood is not being built in Pickens doesn't mean it will impact our town. So planning with you tend to be a very important issue.
All right, next question, get one of that.
Sorry. Yes or no, are you in favor of the current annexation proposal before council?
I would say no. I think we need to work on fixing some of the donut, what we call the donut holes. As a mail carrier, I have a house on one side of the street that I delivered to this county. The other side of the street is city, and just the opposite from the next house over. We're already providing services to these residents. Why don't we get them to be city residents instead of county? They're probably getting city services because there's no way that city employees knows which house jumps in and out of the city. I believe that, you know, they already have the infrastructure, that we're already providing services to them. So we need them as a tax base into our city and then before we go expanding into more area.
I would say no. If you listened to the last county, city council meeting last Monday, you'll hear the contractor, or it was the lawyer, I'm not sure, I was sitting outside and I couldn't see who was talking because it was so full in there. But someone said that, you know, they've made all these plans with the regulations that the city wanted them to have, but there's no safeguard in that contractor selling to someone else once the city approves it to be annexed in. And so if that contractor sells to someone else, that someone else that buys it can do whatever they want to, which means they could high-density build there. And so I would definitely not be for that and not for 100% annexation. I'm really mostly probably against annexation unless it's going to benefit our community. And I don't feel like this would benefit our community.
So first, it was proposed as a yes or no question, so I would like to answer about both. So I think no is a healthy first answer, you know, for any kind of growth. And I think that natural reaction is healthy for a community, especially like Pickens, who takes pride in our small-town feel. So I think Pickens has really escaped the COVID boom, if you want to call it that, over the past four years, without changing our character. So I definitely understand why people don't want to come easily because I don't want that myself either. I will say, I think annexation is a good opportunity to have the city have a voice in its future. So whether that be a housing development or any kind of commercial development anywhere around the city that's neighboring, currently neighboring the city. Annexation, I think on the positive end, provides the city with that opportunity to have a voice. And I think with the safeguards that we have in place, such as zoning ordinances, planning commission, architectural review, things like that, I think we can take a healthy no stance, but make that something that is healthy for the community to consider growing. And also, like I said, you know, with increased tax bases, increased population, which will drive businesses, possibly more employment opportunities that we're all passionate about. And then also, whether that be employers at the city or in-town restaurants, I think those are the cons that we can consider on that topic and hopefully turn that into a yes.
As of right now, given the site plan and what was mentioned in the city hall meeting, I would say no, because I don't think all issues have been addressed properly. But that doesn't mean it's a complete no. I do think, I want to give them the chance to be able to write up a new draft before we completely just say no. Because right now, I do think we are in a housing crisis. We do need to build more affordable homes. That is something that, that's, that isn't something we should shy away from. No development is probably the worst thing, quick development is even worse. So we need slow development. And I believe that these affordable homes can really still maintain the character of Pickens, given the fact that there has been zoning restrictions already addressed. So I think we are headed in the right direction as far as that development goes. But as of right now, it's a no because they haven't addressed the water supply. They also haven't addressed the traffic hazards. I believe they're drawing, they're getting a geotech engineer involved in that. And there's, I think somebody mentioned flood hazard, I'm not sure. But there are some things that need to be taken into consideration. I would also reach out to schools, make sure that we have room in these schools, we're not overcrowding them. That's a big issue too, something that a lot of people don't take into consideration. We don't want to displace long-term residents. So we should need to fight against displacement and fight for the development just so that we can hit two birds with one stone, I guess. But yeah, there's a lot of things we need to look at.
So mine is a not right now. Yes in the future, absolutely, but we need to address infrastructure issues. We're having a problem with water, with the pipes, the aging of them. When you bring more people, now we, we have to look at the, like the public workforce. How do we, well, let me back up a little bit. One of the questions that I've asked candidates on my podcast is, what can we do to attract good employees? It's money. It's always money and good living conditions. We don't want to make it so expensive that they get paid a wage to where they have to live somewhere else because they can't live here close to town. We have to address the schools, absolutely, because we don't want to drop the student-to-teacher ratios and displace other people who have, who have been here, sort of keeping the quality there. We're not just pushing people through and then that leads to other things in the educational system. You have so many that are just barely making it, now that becomes a new standard. What's normal is like overachieving, we don't, we don't want that. But we need to work on what we have now, filling the donut holes, taking care of that. I mean, I've had branches at one point in my cul-de-sac that were there from July 3rd that were still there in November. And I've called and called and called, but they don't have enough people or the one truck, and it broke. And they just, they just can't come get them. So we really need to start at the bottom first. Make sure that when they do come, that we have those services to provide, we have the money to pay the employees so they do a quality job. Because if you, if you, if you're serving 50 homes on the same pay and same hours and now all of a sudden you're doing 100 for the same thing, the math just ain't mathin' at that point. So we need to make sure that we're taking care of, we're taking care of our people and they want to stay with us.
Okay, my answer is yo. You know, annexation is a catch-22. The city needs to increase its tax base. If you want more services, you're going to have to have more development, let's just play it simple. Whether I would vote for this annexation or not, I think is mentioned very well, I think Jessica had a very good point. When I was on the planning commission in the city career, we did more annexations in a month than this town has done in a year. We had to review these issues constantly. And let me tell you, it is true that you will get a lot of developers that will come and say, this is what we're going to do. This is how we're going to do it, it's going to be great. You're going to say, yes, let's do it. And the next minute or they've sold it to someone else. But you don't have a lot of choices. You can refuse the annexation. Or you, the zoning is helpful, but there are other planning considerations that can be added to these deals to make them work better. The pressure on infrastructure is a real issue. But installing new infrastructure for development is not as expensive as replacing old infrastructure in our existing neighborhoods. So there are some benefits to bringing in additional properties. If I'm a property owner outside of the city and I want to be brought into the city and I ask for annexation, are they going to tell me no? I think I have a right as a property owner that if I want to be in, I could at least expect there'd be a reasonable reason why I should be refused. So I don't know the property owners there, but I understand what they're trying to do. And so I would, I would, I would have a yes, but it'd be a conditional yes with more information needed.
I think everybody across the board has pretty much said it pretty well, said everything I was going to say. I'm also agree with Ed on this, it's a no for right now. I don't, I think right now with Pickens, we need to focus more on what we can fix internally first before we decide to expand out. What can we do in the neighborhoods that already need help? We already know the baseline, the infrastructure is a baseline issue that we need to get straightened out, or at least working on better progress towards getting repaired. It doesn't make any sense to add 150 new homes onto the infrastructure that's already struggling. So I definitely don't agree with the annexation as a right now. Down in the future, once we get some more issues and house fixed, then sure, we can revisit that situation and see, okay, what is annexation going to do for this location, this location, and this location? How can we better plan it? What can we do to add these things to the city without putting a strain on its residents, our infrastructure, and everybody else that's involved? Because it doesn't make much sense to add too much right now. I feel like this is one of those things, I'm glad that I did hear they're trying to go a little slower with this in the last meeting I heard. I may have heard wrong, I may need to go back and reread it. But this is something that definitely needs to be a slower-paced thing as compared to what is going on right now. So no, I don't agree with annexation right now.
All right, another question, saw one in the back, back here.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Andy, I have Luth here in Pickens County for over 40 years.
I have lived here in, uh, Pickens County for over 40 years. I came from one of those bad places, a lot of people from up north and down south now, I tried to get away from because of the quality of living in Pickens County. I think I see a lot of old folks here like me, I'm not young. Okay, we, I have been lucky enough to enjoy the quality of life for so many years. My kids have grown. They're Clemson and graduated from Liberty, Liberty High School and so forth and so on. But how much growth is good growth? How much growth is going to put a negative impact on our quality of life here in Pickens County? As I drive around, I'm a little nervous. As I drive around, uh, easily Pickens, the corner of county, I see a lot of developers, uh, building up a lot of houses, a lot of, uh, apartments. But I've noticed one thing, those houses and those apartments, they're for rent. They're not for sale. So what is, what is behind that? What is behind that, uh, that issue where these developers are coming up, coming down here, building up everything they can? And of course, they're going to buy cheap land here in South Carolina. But they're not willing to sell the properties. They want to rent it. And my old theory is that they want to, they know the quality, the, the, the quality of the land, the, it's going to work in the future. So they're, they're kind of like, you know, it's, it's double, double whammy right there. They're taking advantage of the appreciation that land can bring in the future. But they're not selling the houses. They want to keep the houses, rent the houses to the public and at the same time, keep the land. Anybody?
Yeah, so development, that's, uh, I guess to catch it in a nutshell, uh, we have too much development, too little, going around, wrong direction, right direction. How do you feel about it?
Um, okay, well, I drive the county all day long, every, every day. Um, that's part of my job. So I'm out there. I see all of that growth in easily and it stresses me out. I also have to drive through all of that traffic and easily stresses me out. Sitting in traffic, um, decreases your quality of life. I did live in Greensboro for, um, about four years, Greensboro, North Carolina, and, um, it took me, uh, an hour to drive 12 miles. So, um, you know, people coming home from Greenville. I used to also work at Rentman Consultants in Greenville, South Carolina here. And, um, it, driving down 123 has become horrendous. So, um, part of your question, you, you said that the developers were holding on to the houses and renting them. Um, I have talked to individuals that actually say that people are buying those, people here are buying those houses for rentals. Um, so people are, individuals are actually buying them and then renting them out. Um, I do think we need more places to rent. I'm not a homeowner and I need a place to rent. I don't, I don't expect to be a homeowner for a good while. Um, and it's very difficult for people to find affordable rentals for many reasons. Um, but I, I understand issues that come with people that rent. They don't, sometimes they don't take care of the place as well as if they owned the home. And so, um, people may not want to live beside them. But I, I agree with what he said about the Ford lane coming this way and how, um, all of that traffic is going to affect us because they're going to come to us to eat and to dine and to shop.
So whether or not we have too much or too little growth, I think, like I said, uh, Pickens has largely escaped this issue so far. Is too much growth? I don't think we have too much right now. I think the main thing for citizens and people that call Pickens their home is for Pickens not to change. I think we should prioritize any kind of residential development over commercial because I think a lot of the frustrations and traffic problems that I think that we consider negative when we're driving through other neighboring towns is, is mostly due to commercial. But obviously, you know, with increased population, there is going to be stress on roads, traffic, uh, resources. So I think we need to definitely consider growth with that in mind. Uh, and I think also any, any kind of, um, housing development should reflect the community feel and, and support family ownership. I think I would definitely prioritize ownership over rent, uh, as much to agree that that can be allowed. Obviously, the market's going to support what that can bear. But, you know, as me as a property owner, I'm going to take more pride in, in my property if I own it as opposed to renting. So I think that ultimately will lead to better outcomes. You know, if we can make sure that we attract more homeowners, families to the city and make sure that any kind of growth that we experience is, is reflecting what Pickens is and has been.
So to answer your question, uh, I do think we need growth. Uh, I don't think we need to run away from growth. Uh, I think growth is inevitable and so is displacement. They're both inevitable. So we have to be able to maintain both while maintaining the character of the city. Obviously, I don't think too much growth is good. What happens with quick development is we have people moving in and, uh, and then we have people leaving because it's too quick of a growth. And then when you don't have development, no growth whatsoever, uh, you still have neighborhood revitalization, which is what everybody here is vouching for, which when you improve a neighborhood, the property value does increase. So if it increases, then some people who can't afford to pay a high property tax end up getting displaced. So you're going to see displacement in all scenarios. The best way to maintain that is through slow development. So you can have a, maintain a plan for growth. When you have a plan for growth through slow development, you can streamline your projects so you can have, uh, the best, uh, outcomes and, uh, uh, you know, prioritize accountability. So yeah, I feel like growth is important. Um, I think he mentioned, um, increasing with tax base. Uh, slow growth can give us an opportunity to not have to put a strain on our pockets and still be able to deliver on the services. Um, so yeah, that's my take on it.
Slow growth, I agree. Um, sustainable growth, growth that is matching, um, maybe surrounding homes where they're similar. Because when you start putting multimillion dollar houses next to not multimillion dollar houses, a lot of your taxes go up because of its value, which is a, which is a problem. Deliberate growth, just making sure that we're, I don't know, I'm not a foundations guy. We got to make sure that we're squared away over here so we're going to be able to sustain all of it, the traffic, the schools. Um, growth is not a bad thing. It is not. But it's, it's definitely necessary. And again, as he said, it's inevitable. It's going to happen. Uh, people will come this way. I think valuing, valuing our land, uh, is, is somewhat where, if land gets passed down just a couple of generations and it's farmland and you're like, I have this big mass of land, it's very tempting to a developer to come and give you a bunch of money instead of you having to pay taxes on it. So I think valuing, valuing it, keeping it. But if it does get sold, that is sold in smaller plots. Because if it's just, I mean, I look at easily a lot and there's, it just boom, it happens. I, I was born and raised up till I was 21 years old in the suburbs of Philadelphia. And it was nothing like here. That's, that's why I'm here. Because this is a beautiful, wonderful place to, to be at. So when I, she cut me off.
Thanks, Ed. Well, I think what we're all trying to say is what we want, we want smart development. We want smart growth. We want balanced growth, right? We want, we want to make it all work because it can work. We can have development, new developments. It can be the kind of developments that we want. They don't have to be just slammed full of houses, you know, you know, 15 houses per, you know, per square quarter or whatever. I mean, um, it can be done properly, but it does take some effort. It takes, we have a comprehensive plan. Now, I know it's been a while since it's been updated, but the one that we have is still actually very valuable. It has a lot of good ideas in it. And we're going to be updating that very soon. And the companies that go out to do these plans for the city will be out in the community. They'll be asking people questions about what they want for the community. And, um, I'm sure that a lot of you will be there in those meetings to, to mention what you want, what you want to see happen in, in the way of our community here. So, um, development unfortunately is going to come, whether we really want to or not. And, uh, so the important thing is, is to look at it fairly, understanding that property owners have property rights. And, uh, we don't want to be overburdening as a government, uh, but at the same time, it's not unfair to ask for a few conditions and a few things that helps keep it working for everyone. All right?
So I'll definitely say one thing that I'm definitely proud of with Pickens is we have done a very good job in making sure that we do add businesses and add locations, do development here. We're not putting them in locations that's detrimental to what the character of Pickens is and the people around it. I do agree with pretty much everybody else on this board of, if we're going to do growth, do it smart. Don't just throw 30 houses up in a random location because, oh, we need to do this today. No, we, too much growth, too, like too quick a growth and too much at one time is where it starts becoming detrimental to everybody involved. Once you start, that's when you start seeing things like gentrification happening in the, in neighborhoods, where people get priced out of their own neighborhood despite the fact you might've been there 40, 50 years. You start throwing up a bunch of brand new houses that are overvalued in a, in a neighborhood. Next thing you know, now you're having to move two cities over to, to buy a house that you didn't want in the first place. You've had that house for 30, 40, 50 years. It's been your family house. You don't want to leave there, but now because you can't afford to stay there because the growth has happened too quickly, now you have to leave. I also agree with Jonathan talking about ownership over rental, I feel is a better option because you're prouder of owning something. When you can develop smart, you're able to put affordable houses and affordable apartments that people can go rent or try to own. And you're not detrimental to everybody else in the neighborhood around you. You're not pricing them out of where they live. And once you start pricing people out of where they live, you're 100% going to get the wrong purchase. And you need to bad trade, you need to figure it out and get it fixed.
I agree with everyone else. I think we need more affordable housing for people, um, smaller homes maybe than starter homes. And help families grow and, you know, building 300,000, 500,000 or homes, like everyone else said, it's going to increase the tax burden to everyone else that is trying to get started. And like, um, Jessica said, places to rent of smaller homes. I believe people will move in, they'll be able to live here, be able to work here and stay and spend their money in Pickens instead of driving too easily to live and take their money, urban money here and drive to another town to spend it. We need people that can live here, afford to live here and spend their money locally to help our taxpayers.
All right, any other questions? I thought I saw one. Dylan?
I would just like to get a quick number, uh, just I don't need an explanation with it. But what would be sort of the top amount you would consider affordable housing? So if you think that's 20,000, you think it's 400,000? I just need a number. What would you think would be the maximum that would be considered affordable housing? I don't need an explanation.
Like a value?
Yeah, just give, yeah, just give me a number on affordable housing. What, that and under?
I mean, I think, you know, everyone's income should be able to support, you know, what they can afford as far as that.
I just need a number. Just a number. What do you think in your mind is considered affordable housing? Uh, that and below. What would be the max number you would consider?
Well, it would also depend on the size of the house or?
I just need a number, my friend. Affordable family housing. I want to know what's in y'all's mind when y'all keep referencing affordable housing.
Yeah, so, um, looks like you just want the affordable house number.
Yeah, if you think it's 400,000, say 400,000.
Yes, I see what you're saying. So you guys can answer that, how you, how you see fit. Um, he's looking for a number. If you have a number, great. If not, then that's, that's okay too.
Okay. Well, like I said, I think it, it obviously is dependent on someone's, that's one of the financial means. So for me, obviously, I would like to, if I had the, if I'm a homeowner looking to, to come to Pickens and, and I did this myself when I was looking for a place to live. Um, obviously, I prefer to take an existing home or property in a already established neighborhood and revamp that and make it my own. If it's, if it's not up to COVID, if it's not up to the standards of today's living, then I would want to rehab those places. Um, and in, in that case, you know, that might be a couple hundred thousand in, in that situation. Um, as far as a new home, I think it could be a little more because you're probably buying a, a newer product. So I think the problem is, you know, somebody not like myself who would want to take an existing place or property and rehab that and, and bring it up to a current livable standard. I think oftentimes return on investment is such that it, it is not a good investment to do that. So we need, either need to find ways to, to make that more affordable or like, like you pointed out, bringing up more affordable housing in there. But I think it's a complicated.
I would just like the people not to dance around answers. If you don't have an answer, that's fine.
So we can, we can have it out, out in the back. You, you can ask your question, they can answer. You might not like, like the answer, but.
I, I, I was.
That wasn't an answer.
Well, that's, that's, that's fine. They're, they're the candidates. They're up here running.
No, I understand. I didn't answer the way that you wanted me to.
And, and that's okay.
If I, do I have any more time? I just wanted to say it was a little bit complicated to answer. I know you're looking for one number and I, I think that's a very difficult thing to answer with. So I answered it the best way I could and I, I appreciate your response.
Appreciate.
Um, from what I've researched, uh, the average, uh, property value right now in Pickens is over 200,000. So, uh, I would say that anything around 120 to 150, um, is an affordable housing. I think when we look at, I've, I've heard some people bring up gentrification. Uh, I will say that when high income residents move into those, these neighborhoods and they revitalize these neighborhoods and, you know, they increase the value of property, uh, they love these properties because of the low housing costs. So to avoid that from happening, we need more affordable homes so that they have more options. The options are not only available in those low income neighborhoods. So to give you a number, I would say, like I said, 120 to 150, given the values over 200,000. Pickens, brother?
All right, so my answer is, I guess it's pretty straightforward. From my experience, I've got three years left on my mortgage and I'm really happy about that. 1100 square feet, living in a cul-de-sac, acre and a half, 139.5. That's where I'm at. Maybe, maybe 150, something like that, around in there.
Okay, um, you know, it's difficult to give you a number. I'm not going to really give you a number. It is, as someone pointed out, it depends on your situation, what's affordable. But if you really want to know what's affordable, free is affordable. So if you want to have a number, affordable housing is free housing. Now, we don't want free housing in this town because you don't want the people that's going to draw in. Okay? So, um, it's a complicated question and, um, uh, the premise of your, of your question is, is somewhat complex. But it really depends on your situation, what's affordable. And you can talk about it as a percentage of your income, a percentage of the median household income in your town. Um, there's a lot of factors into that. And, uh, but, uh, there's a cost to building housing and nobody builds it for free unless you're the government.
Uh, in an ideal world, I'd say 200K or less. In an ideal world, in my ideal world, because I was previously shopping, I was kind of looking around for houses and one right around the corner from my house went for about 289, I believe. Nice house. They said they remortgaged, remortgaged it, but I'm just basing it off of current building standards and how price of everything is now. And I'm hoping I'm likely basing it off of two, two income houses. For somebody that's on one income, I would love for that to be 150 or less, but that's a dream, that's me dreaming. I'm trying to, I, I want to keep dreaming if I can. But yeah, 200K or less would be my ideal, 225 at max.
I agree with Joe, probably about 200,000. But it depends on the person, each individual family, their family situation. What's affordable is it has no children, it could be more. If they have four children, uh, you know, 200,000 may not be affordable to them. So that is very subjective to what number would act affordable. But, you know, you get more affordability is to be able to draw in more people to be able to look at these homes and to, to have a place to choose to live. So I don't really have a number, around 200,000 probably for the average income person.
So when I think about affordable housing, to me, that makes me think of people that live at poverty level or below. And, um, none of those numbers up there I can afford. Um, so my. So my daughter has worked here in the city of Pickens for seven years and she does live with me because she cannot afford to live on her own. And she tried to get a house on her own. She's very good at saving money. She walked to work for a year, saved her money and bought her a brand new car. So she tried to get a, a house recently and she was only approved for eighty thousand dollars. You cannot buy a house for eighty thousand dollars. So when I think of affordable housing, it would be somewhere between eighty and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. When I think of rentals, it would be somewhere between seven fifty and a thousand dollars, not that one thousand four hundred to twenty-two hundred dollar mess we got out there. That's not affordable.
Any other questions? I think we got time for one more before we do closing remarks. Get one up here, Mr. Rush.
So you'll, you'll find out when you get on council, one of the biggest problems you'll have is budgets, that they can hit you with real attacks. And one of our, one of the issues that I see on the budgets is revenue. I know you guys have been hitting all over it, but revenues are, is the city's biggest, one of the biggest issues that we have. I know it's, it's that for every city, that for the federal government, it's for everybody, but we have salaries to pay, increase of salaries to stay at the cost of living, we have infrastructure, we have capital that we just let go this year because we just couldn't afford it. Fire engines in cars, police cars and so on. We need a new city hall. We have, we have so much revenue and, and need and we, and we have no access to it. So you guys have any creative ideas? Because I can't see how we can do this without growing. I mean, if we, if we keep our city the same, at the same level, at the same housing costs and we don't, we don't annex and we don't do anything, we don't, store like Walmart and so on and bring in more revenue, then I don't know what we're going to do, you know, because we have employees who are, you know, again, they can't afford to live here, they can't, we got to keep up the, the cost of living for them and we got to pay the bills, we got to keep the lights on and you know everything is going up probably ten to fifteen percent a year or more. So creative ideas or your ideas on how the city can increase revenue rather quickly and sustainably.
Yeah, so I think thriving business, thriving city, this is my quote, we need more businesses and we need thriving businesses. I think main attractions will help. When you build a main attraction around businesses that aren't thriving as much, you build more traffic that way to those surrounding storefronts. So having an increasing quality of business can help and, you know, I think by now our general funds, business license tax is one of our leading revenue sources. Also, I would say building more homes is another idea. I do see that development is the way to go, whether it be large scale developments or small scale developments, that, that does help. And, you know, like you said, we need, we need to pay our employees and, and look at our salaries. So my way is when we look at large scale developments, we don't want to happen too quick, we don't want to get overzealous. So again, I'm for the development of any sort of large scale developments or small scale developments, but we have to look at making sure that we are putting more people first as far as safety goes and making sure that all residents are satisfied with any plan that we decide to go with. So more businesses, more homes is important.
In the end, I think going back and cutting fat at where we're at, you know, we, we always have to go that first, before raising taxes, before taking loans, before any of that, we need to potentially cut off things that might not be necessary, but we all know here that everything that, almost everything that we have is, is necessary. And to echo what Youssef has to say is, one of the biggest ways is to add, but to add sustainably and, and be very direct of, of how it is and how those homes will be added and whether we have to make some ordinance on, on the speed of which they can come in so it doesn't put people out or raise it too high and then others have to pay higher property tax that we're not going to see for the most part anyway that goes to the county. We just have to be smart about that development and let it in a little bit at a time. And again, businesses, when you have cool businesses, there's a lot of foot traffic. It's like, how did Hendersonville get to the way they are? I always look at Hendersonville, how did TR in ten years? There was nothing there. Nothing. Not everybody wants to be there. They have a really cool, thriving downtown area where you can walk, you can drink, heck, you can drive golf balls right on Main Street. You know, it's kind of a, it's kind of yuppie, but it's, it's a, it's an activity town, you know, it, it's, it's closer to the mountains. I mean, we can do things like that if we're smart like that, so maybe even cross pollinating with their chamber of how, how did you get this? How did you help promote these things? How did you get that foot traffic to come in? And I'm, I'm not too, I'm not too shy to ask. So if, if they can do it and they can help us, that would be great.
Thank you. So that's, that's tough for me, Floyd. To do it quickly, you've got very few options, but some things that you can address are business license fees, development impact fees, utility tab fees. Those are all things that can be adjusted and, and bring some immediate revenue. There's no one fix, there's no one revenue model that's going to suddenly just increase the, the revenue to the city. It's going to have to be spread out among several different sources and options. There's always raising taxes. No one wants to hear that, but that is a, a quick option, unfortunately. And there are, there may be some other, and I'm not saying I'm in favor of those things, I'm just saying those are your options, okay? And those are things that might need to be discussed in the council, a setting and to decide what is the, the best way to go, but let me just tell you this, half of you are going to be mad with whatever decision is made and the other half of you is going to be disgusted. So it's just, there's no easy answer there and Pickens has growth problems. They're not the same kind of growth problems that Travelers Rest had or Greenville has or Clemson has or Eze has, but we have them and we just, we need to be very methodical and meticulous about how we approach these things, but I agree, we're going to have to add quickly and so we need to be ready to go, boot to the ground the first day.
I say green, what you said, green, what happens, this development you're going to have to do. But the real question is like, what are we doing to make Pickens attractive to new business? Did anybody in here know that we actually had a rec, a smash room here at one point? Did anybody even know? We had, there's a whole Spanish restaurant on the other side of town past Tony's. Anybody know that it's over there next to Beelaw Honey? That's, that's the biggest issue that Pickens has had. When we do get new businesses, a lot of those businesses that do come don't stay long because they don't, because people don't know they're here. So we don't frequent them. So what are we doing to make those businesses attractive to people who are over here? And if we do that, that makes it attractive to new businesses that come in, oh, they're getting frequented, they're getting looked at, they're getting revenue. If we can go there, we notice that this place doesn't have this, we don't have this. Sure, when Walmart, Zaxby's, Waffle House and Mavis and all them came in, wonderful, it was a great, it was nice to have those extra things because easily had all those things and we got tired of having to drive fifteen, twenty minutes to go get it. Now we can drive five minutes to get there. That's why we need to do, that's why revitalization is a bigger deal. What can we do on Main Street to make Main Street more attractive to the business? What can we do off the side streets going towards Engels, coming towards Walmart? We have plenty of open buildings that can put businesses in them, but shoot, I still miss the dang butcher shop on the other side of town. Every day I drive past it, I want to go in and pick up some meat, but there ain't nobody there. I'm, I, I miss it. We need to bring a butcher shop there. So nobody has to drive to Greenville to find a butcher shop or drive to Six Mile or drive to San Diego. It's about making sure we can focus on us and see what we can do to bring new things in and make it attractive to the people coming in. So that way word of mouth is a big deal.
I don't think there's any quick fix answer, but again, revitalize downtown, get an identity, work with some of the ordinances to fill up the empty storefronts. I talked to a business owner, I mean, actually he owns two of the, the buildings downtown. The ordinance says that he can't even rent an office space in the back of his building because it's against city ordinance. We're going to have, we're losing another business downtown the first of the year that's already leaving. Behavioral Health downtown has four storefronts that was looking to move to Easley. We got to keep these people here, we got to find someone to go in there, some way to create foot traffic downtown. One thing that I brought up that I was top of people, one day I was delivering a company eight years ago, I was in Eaton, North Carolina, and one thing that impressed me about something they did and I think something we could bring here, not again, it's going to revenue things, but something there, I still remember that they piped Christmas music out downtown. So get a feel, get people to come downtown, a variety, you know, some way to attract other people down there and grow its tax rates that way. It's not going to be a quick fix, but anything moving forward is a positive way to go.
So I guess my first thoughts to, to your very complex question is that, you know, why are we redoing the train right now if we can't pay our officers more money? Why were we looking in to buy property beside the hospital if we can't pay them more money? Why are we doing those things? It seems like we need to get our priorities and check first. And the other thing would be to make sure we're getting all of the grants we can possibly get. We need, we might need a grant writer, someone that does this for a living, that's out there searching for those grants, writing and, and submitting and trying to get all the money we can get so that we can utilize the, the funds for something else. We definitely need more foot traffic down Main Street. I go visit several businesses on Main Street. I'd like to walk around, I'd like to sit down, I'd like to hang out, but there's not that feel down there. We need that feel down there. And as far as behavioral health goes, behavioral health is moving and that's going to create a whole nother issue because people that have depression issues, substance issues, whatever, are going to now have to find travel too easily to get care. And so that might even create a bigger issue for us here in the future.
So I think it's a great question in regards to the budget. I think that's probably one of the more critical and upfront issues that council has to deal with, even though the, the issues that get a lot, a lot of attention are probably the amount of things that are most important, like the budget. So obviously the first way for want to get, you know, stay out of rents and, and get in the black is, would be either to increase revenue, like you said, or cut funding. So on the surface, I don't think either one of those, whether that be raising taxes or cutting funding, I don't think either one of those is the first objective. So if I compare it to, you know, business, running a small business and the things that I do and, and what I think I would be able to bring to the council is, if this situation was, you know, affecting me and my business, obviously I would not want to cut funding to my employees or any, anything like that. I would turn to marketing. So we need, need to market ourselves as a, as a good community to live in. Obviously we're proud of the natural resources and the beauty of our area, so we need to market that and, and try to raise our, you know, population and, and let that be a consequence and a consequence of that be growth in the tax revenue and, and the tax base and hopefully take some pressure off of our budgets and also provide a great environment for working and city employees and leaders and to be able to develop their departments as well and create a town that we're all proud of. Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to throw you guys a curve ball. We're actually going to go from this way over for closing remarks. So Youssef, you'll start first. Two minutes on your closing remarks, let these people know why they should vote for you. Switching up a little.
Thank you all for coming out and asking questions. You know, I always appreciate the city for welcoming me and my family with open arms. I have love for the city and I have love for the people in it. And I, I do believe that, you know, I hope that this actually empowers our youth through the results of this election, because I do think it can empower our youth to be able to make a name for themselves and come out and, and, and put their names out there and, and become a government officials, making a difference. I do feel like that there is a possibility that in the results of this election that that can happen. So I, I look forward to serving you as city councilman and I look forward to represent, to represent all of you and wish all of you a God bless night.
Once again, thank you for your time. I think the, the fact that we have a crowd here tonight and also so many candidates up for election, you know, just reinforces the fact that Pickens has great involved community members and citizens that, that want to support our town and, and see it thrive. I consider myself, obviously in that, in that camp, I'm one of the best for Pickens. I'm doing this as an act of service, I believe. And, you know, I don't think, I think it's a thankless job, I think whether I get elected or not. If I do get elected, I think I don't expect to, to make everyone happy or, you know, I think obviously I'm going to, with any decision, you're going to make some people mad, but I think if the intentions are one, out of service and then for the betterment of Pickens, I think, I think I could offer that to the council.
Thanks everyone for coming out and taking, you know, time out of your evening to listen to us. I think that we all have potential, I think we're all good candidates and so I think you got good choices. You know, one reason, I, I've said a couple of reasons why I'm running, but probably the main reason why I'm running is because I feel unheard, I feel uncared for, I feel like I have no voice. And so I, if, if elected, I would definitely want to be the people's voice. I would want to listen and hear and act in a way that would represent most of the people. And I, I, I love living here in the city of Pickens and it does scare me that Easley has grown in such a way. And so I think we all do want to be careful with our city. I think you heard that from most of us, that we want to be careful with the growth in our city, but we do know that we do need some growth. And, you know, I appreciate your vote if you're, if you want to vote for me, but it's your right to vote for whomever you wish. And so I just hope that you get out there to the polls and, and vote. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the candidates for all coming out tonight and spending their evening here with you. I'd like to extend my gratitude to the hosts for allowing this platform for all of us to get to speak. I hope that you've gotten to learn a little more about each, each and one of us and how that we can take whoever gets elected is to bring Pickens to the next level and help our city thrive. Thank you.
First things first, thank you for the Republican Club that has come out here. Thank all of you for coming out, asking us questions, because I didn't have to think this hard a long minute, but, but at the end of the day, who you vote for is your choice. I'm not going to sit here and tell you, vote for Ed, vote for Jess, vote for anybody out here, because that's not my option at the end of the day. All I do is come to you and show you that I have what I, I might, I may not be the smartest man, I may not be the most motivated man on some things, but when it comes down to getting the job and doing work for that job, I go home. I come, clock in, do what I got to do, I go home. Because I want to make sure that when I leave, the job is done right. At the end of the day, Pickens is changing. Slowly but surely, I know a lot of us would rather not because I like how Pickens is, I like the small hometown feel and I really, I agree with Jess, I really don't hope we don't end up like Easley. Easley's done for us too much in my opinion. I like the hometown feel. I like the people that I, that I get to come out and talk to and I like the fact that y'all came out and listened to. At the end of the day, all I want is that we all move forward together in Pickens and we all grow and excel together as one city and one community and just love doing what we all do each and every day.
Let me just mention again, one of the things that I really like about Pickens is the Christmas parade and every year I look forward to it and I think, gosh, this is so great and it's small enough where you can, you can kind of interact with a lot of people and it's not so long that it goes on for hours or whatever because you're in a big city. But, you know, in order to ensure that we have those kind of events here and we have that hometown feel about our community. here and we have that hometown feel about our community, it's going to be important to, to bring experience to the table. And we, we've talked a little bit about water. We've talked a lot about development and about what's going to happen in the next five, 10 years with, with development in this town. And so I bring, I bring planning experience. I bring business experience. Been a business owner for, uh, well over 25 years. I've been in the same industry for over 30 years. Um, and I understand how things work. I understand complicated, uh, documents and, and how, how attorneys are sometimes your friends and sometimes they're not. Um, they get paid for those positions. And, um, and I understand, so I understand a lot of these issues and there's more than just the issue itself. There's a lot of, wherever there's an issue, there are people. And where there are people, there are egos and there are things that people want to have happen because they just want to see their way all the time. So I hope what I bring to this, and I do, I believe I bring to this is, is, uh, one, some, some maturity and some age. That is, uh, not, not demeaning the younger folks here on the stage at all, but there's some value in that. Um, I've seen how things can get twisted and how you have to be very careful with what you say and how you say things. Um, um, so I think, I appreciate your vote. And I think I bring a lot of, a lot of, uh, positive, um, uh, energy, uh, even though I'm kind of a laid back kind of a guy, um, I can bring a lot of hype.
Again, not, not to make your head too big, but I want to thank Clay for, um, having us out here. Normally do county stuff, right? And not really municipal stuff, so, state stuff. So, so thanks for, uh, for that. Um, I would like to bring middle aged into this. So that's, that's where I'm at. Um, again, I go back to the foundations. Um, you know, you got to get the foundations right before we can move on. And we could do that rather quickly if we all really worked together. And how do we work together? By getting everybody together. And that's, comes through the communication. When things happen, they, they need to be let known when there, um, you know, things at city hall and there, there was just so much unknown, but they knew, but we don't. So we ask. And then you start to think in your head, well, no, this is really what's going on. And then it just goes, I mean, you know how social media is, it just goes everywhere. I think the thing is, is that we just, we got to communicate with one another. We got to set those foundations straight and then build up from there. So again, I, I do bring middle aged, uh, experience. Um, I'm a boots on the ground kind of guy. And I've actually been called gimmicky for saying what I say. And I messed it up on WYFF and I'm glad you brought it to my attention. Um, was that if there's a problem where you're at or whatever, I will always come to you. I'll look you in the eye, shake your hand, I'll write it down and I will go to bat for you at council meetings as your advocate. And that's, that's what I want to do. I have the time. I, I stay at home. We homeschool. Um, I'm just a phone call away and I'm always, and will always be available to you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. And, uh, thank you all again for, for coming out tonight. Um, like I said earlier, you guys could have been anywhere else in the world, but you're here to hear from these candidates. Um, I will say one thing about the whole group. I've, I've done a lot of these. Uh, you can't fake passionate care. And these, these people, I can say they all, they all care. Um, they want what's best for Pickens. Different ideas, different backgrounds, uh, and that's okay. You guys get the chance to cast your vote for, for two of these individuals. And whoever ends up winning certainly wish you all the well. Anything we can do as a club to help you guys in, in your success, um, we're happy to do that. So thank you all again and hope you have a wonderful night.